All right, good afternoon. It is 5:00 PM, Tuesday, May 13th. This is Special City Council Meeting Workshop. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, you want to do your call?
Sure. Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Gerson?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Streeman?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
So noted.
You're quiet.
Thank you. Citizens comments?
None.
None tonight. First item is special presentation, our fiscal '26 Explore Charleston budget. I know we've got Kat and Laurie with us, who's taking the... Laurie?
Yes.
Kat?
Thank you all for joining us.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. You have both of us this evening. I'm Laurie Lynn Smith with Explore Charleston and Kat Dougherty, you have both of us this evening. Thank you for having us. We want to begin briefly. You know who we are. We have the mission statement up here, but you know who we are. I just want to mention that not only are we responsible for marketing the Charleston area, but we also are engaged with tourism management in the region. As the promotional organization for the region, it is our charge to look through several lenses. You know, we've worked together for several years and it is our job. We've been working really hard with you to strike a meaningful balance, to, number one, add value at the local level with Isle of Palms-specific initiatives. And, number two, we want to lift Isle of Palms through our island and beaches campaigns. And, number three, it's really important that we engage Isle of Palms through our regional promotion, because that is a really important component of the storytelling that we do at the regional level as a regional destination, marketing, and management organization. Now, as you know, Isle of Palms generates a good bit of visitor dollars from various sources of taxes. Today, of course, we're here to talk about state accommodations tax dollars, very specifically the 30% that you all designate to a designated marketing and management organization through the 30% pool. Now, the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee specifically sets aside categories for which your promotional dollars must be spent. Category one is in the form of advertising and marketing expenses, and this year we've designated, and oh my gosh, I can embarrass to say, I can barely see, $680,000 is what we are proposing in this year's budget. Category, it's category three, actually, in the Turk category is called marketing support, and that is $218,000 that we're proposing in this year's budget that we're bringing to you. Category four in the Turk budget is group sales efforts, and that's just over $67,000. Category five is media efforts, and that is roughly $131,000. And the last category is visitor services, and we have allocated $4,000 in that particular category. Now, this is hard to see, but in your packet you have the detail from us that we presented to the accommodations tax committee. In working with the accommodations tax committee, we've dived deeper and want to share a little more with you this evening and talk a little bit more about what is in your packet. As you see on this slide, we have planned $371,000 in expenditures that are based solely or focused solely on the Isle of Palms. That's about 34% of the overall spend that we plan with you all, and Catherine's going to dive into these initiatives specifically. Going back to the Turk report, which is what you all will need to submit to the state, I just want to let you know that those will be reported in the advertising, in the marketing support, and in the media categories.
Thank you, Laurie. I love being out here. It's so good to see you all. And it's fun to work on a happy seaside place that's open all year round and welcomes people. So I hope one of the things you take away tonight is that we've really received your feedback and made tweaks over the past couple of years, and so I'm happy to share with you even more of what we have planned for the new year. So, starting with your dedicated Isle of Palms municipal page, this one is on the Explore Charleston site, so gives visitors a great overview. It's also a place for our Isle of Palms-specific digital advertising to land. And then here are samples of our social media, and you can see, again, this is Isle of Palms. This is not Charleston area, it's not Charleston beaches. This part of the campaign is specific to being out here. And then, the big dog, the one, thank you all for pointing us in this direction a couple of years ago. I am so thrilled to share with you your performance from this current fiscal year we're in. We upped our spend a little bit more with VRBO, and we generated for this island over $5 million in revenue. And if you're like, how does that work? How can you say that? These are from people that clicked on the Isle of Palms-specific ad within VRBO and were taken to a page that only populated VRBO rentals, and then they booked from there. So, pretty impressive. For every dollar we spent, there was a $43 return, and we recommend even upping that spend. We also pledged to you to continue to only run this campaign in the off-season. We run this from the end of September through March, so really pushing when you all need it the most, when we know that there aren't too many people here. And I hope that you all do find some value in that to the tune of 5 million, but we're thrilled to continue to work with them. And just as a refresher, they are owned by Expedia, so the power of that company and the power of data mining and what they're able to do for us and help us find those right visitors is pretty unique to them, and it's a really good experience for us to work with them. So, excited to continue that. Also, excited to continue to work with your team and your staff. We are going to be entering into finding an outside agency to help create a new leisure brand for the island. That's going to be really fun. It's been a long time since we've even got to sit on the sidelines for that, so I'm excited to see where that takes us. Also, the walkability study that we will be sponsoring through the COG. And then, we're committed to also continuing the work that you all have done as a community with David McNair and IOP Thrives. You know, it's not, the big part's over, but it doesn't end there. There'll continue to be meetings and more efforts done through that, so all things that we love being a part of. And then, just our year-round marketing approach. We've been able to alter some of our media based on your feedback, and I'm hoping Amy can click play for me, if you don't mind. This is a new video this year. And we're continuing to work with our dear Chandra. She's a part of all of these efforts that we've been doing this past year, photography, videography, all of our messaging, and she's your staff person, but we have the benefit of being able to coordinate and collaborate with her. So, we look forward to more of that, Chandra. And then, back to Laurie.
Back to the numbers. Kat gets all the pretty stuff, I get the spreadsheets. So, in this next section, we're looking at Isle of Palms' role in our islands and our $36,891 is what we have allocated in this section for the islands and beaches piece of this puzzle. It is about, forgive me, 31% of what we are bringing to you this evening. In this part of the budget is reflected advertising and marketing support. So, Kat, just the pretty stuff.
So, more in the beaches area. We have another site, charlestonareabeaches.com, which performs unbelievably well, and you all have a very robust section on this site. Other things that we added in this past year were an FAQs, an accessibility guide, complete with a Google map, where people look at Isle of Palms, they know all your accessibility points for anyone that may need that. Leash hours, tide charts, all those things that we previously weren't talking about that we realized visitors probably need to know that, too, is now up on this site, so that's ever-evolving. We've really reduced, in the area of beaches, our print campaign, again, taking feedback from you all, but we are still working in the South Carolina Vacation Guide for beaches messaging, as well as coastal living, so great audiences there. And then, once again, for this summer, we will be the presenting sponsor of the Know Before You Go initiative. I know Mayor Pounds is very involved in that with our friends at ABC4, and we are thrilled to continue to be the sponsor of that, and they've got a lot of new things up their sleeve that they showed us to help get the word out even more for this year's campaign.
So, you may be surprised to know that Isle of Palms has 16 and 1/2% of the entire community's luxury lodging inventory. That seems like a lot for a relatively small island. Isle of Palms also has just over 8% of the inventory for full-service lodging inventory in the community. So, that means, you know, that hotels that are looking to book groups, you all have just over 8% of those rooms in the entire community. That kind of business, group business, is extremely lucrative and important to your economy here on the island, and of course, to our overall economy. That kind of business is really great in the off-season, because those folks are staying in the hotel, they're eating in conference rooms, and they're also not the ones that are going to be backing up traffic in the summertime. So, anyway, we have designated $67,040 between the luxury room lodging and between the full-service market, which equates to about 6% of the budget that we have brought to you tonight. All of this falls into the group sales and trade show category from Turk.
We have an amazing staff that works year-round to bring us this business each year, and just a few of the reasons, as Laurie already outlined, of why this is so important of it, I mean, what a huge percentage of them fly here. So, again, no, not as many cars adding to your roads. Really important, number three, it's contracted business, so the likelihood of them canceling is really small. So, it's business you can depend on, even when we're maybe not so sure what's going on with the rest of the economy. If you've got a book piece of business, that's good to go. And then, most of it's during the off-season, so we feel really good about our team and what they're out there doing. So, fam tours are when we bring a group of meeting planners into town, and they have a set itinerary. We always look to include out here on our itinerary, trade shows attended. Those can be anything from national associations, corporate groups, religious groups, family reunions. There's a trade show for everything, literally. And then, site visits is when a meeting planner calls us and says, I have a specific assignment, I'm planning something, I need to come to town, here's what I want to see, and that's when we host them as well. And then, just to kind of remind you all and get you, yay meetings, they touch on a lot of different things, and they help a wide variety of our businesses that they influence right here on the island, too, so.
And Isle of Palms has just over 8% of all of the lodging inventory in the Charleston area. So, we have applied $325,602 across campaigns that the Bureau is handling for community-wide destination promotion. These fit into the project categories for Turk that apply to advertising, to marketing support, to media efforts, and to visitor services.
So, we do do a heavily targeted off-season campaign, really pushing holiday season here from Thanksgiving all the way through New Year's, and we can't, we're not comfortable sharing that message without having our beaches front and center. Our island communities are great all year round, so you can see, you all are featured on the holiday page on our website, christmystincharleston.com, also in our general advertising in the off-season as well. We're always featuring island images.
Is it a names? Are names as well?
It depends. If we, for some of these, you'll see packages, so when your hotels from the island send in packages, then we find different print and digital ads to plug them in, as long as they're submitted. Yeah?
I meant like Isle of Palms. I heard Isle of Palms.
This is under the general community advertising.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, new to us this year, going back to our friends at St. Clair that run the Know Before You Go campaign and who's also our streaming partner, we, they came to us with a new idea, and that was beach-specific segmentation for our streaming ads, and we were able to find people, certain months while we were advertising, that want to come to a beach. So, how do we get our beaches in front of them? And we have a very specific outdoor video that runs, and you can see, we ran this September through January, and we had over a million impressions and a really good, over half a million reach for that time period. And then, community effort, but able to tell you results specific to Isle of Palms. We work with certain consortia of travel agents to, again, help them book their clients here. So, what you're looking at is Amadeus is the GDS network. We have an ad on there, but all of your lodging partners out here. If it's a hotel on Isle of Palms, they are able to be booked, and we can track that. And again, it's very similar to VRBO. Those travel agents on the GDS have to click on our ad, and then they book. That's where we get the information from. So, last year to this year, '23 to '24, we had a 23% growth in bookings directly to Isle of Palms properties. And then, Signature Travel Network, again, these are Isle of Palms-specific, that's the only ones I counted, 69% growth in rooms booked out here. And that's not just Wild Dunes, that's also the beachfront hotels as well. So, performing really well within those ad platforms, and we know those are booked rooms. And then, earned media, so our media team is always out there pitching your community, and hopefully, I know Jan saw the mention in the South Best Awards, that's a great accolade from our friends and readers of Southern Living, you all were listed as one of the top 50 beaches in the U.S., but you can see, our team has worked on some other Isle of Palms-specific media, too, this year. And then, visitor services. You know, we still believe in that personal touch, so whether someone comes into one of our visitor centers, or if they call, you would, in this day and age, we still get phone calls. Or, they chat with a local, guess what? We don't outsource that. Those folks sit in our office, they're really our employees, and they are well-versed in Isle of Palms and all things Charleston, and we're really proud that we're able to serve that role. And then, if you hadn't seen, the brand-new golf guide, Wild Dunes is featured on the cover. These go out every year through the welcome centers, the visitor centers. We have a partnership with Kingdom Magazine, beautiful golf lifestyle magazine, created by Arnold Palmer, that we do that gets even more of these out the door to us, so really love having you all's golf course on there. And then, back to Laurie.
This is just summarizing what you've already seen, which is the form that Deborah will need to submit to the state, should we move ahead, and I hope we do. But we'd be happy to take any questions, and again, we're happy to be here this evening and happy to be your partner in promoting Isle of Palms.
Thank you, Laurie and Kat. Questions for...
Yeah, I have one question. I saw on the, I think it's in the Isle of Palms-specific category, where there was $50,000 budgeting to rebrand. What, can you say more about that?
Certainly. I believe that is a request that came from your staff. They're looking to work on a branding campaign for the city. That's not something we're looking to do, but that is something that your team is looking to do, so that's what we included for the budget.
So, how would that money, listen, where are you going to present that? The city's going to engage a consultant to rebrand that money, you pay for out of that bunch?
If that's how you all choose to do it, if you wanted us to manage that, we could. If not, your team could certainly engage someone, and we would pay for it. We were asked to budget $50,000, so we did.
Okay, I just didn't know if that's something you were taking on.
Yeah. We'd be happy to do that.
I think you better.
Yeah.
And we're, we're great with that. We have no problem.
Yeah, certainly.
I think before I started, Kevin?
No, we started a little bit of work with just logo and images, but this would be a more kind of robust effort on full branding, but it would be a similar project like the one with the McNair Group or the walkability study, where we're kind of driving that effort, but the CVB is assisting with the funding.
I would think that the logo and brand and whatever the motto or whatever that we come up with would be the end product of something like that, rather than the beginning, because we need to quantify who we are, what we are, what we want to project ourselves to be.
I think that was kind of our, I think that was our conclusion when working on the brand, that that, do this first, and then it would lead, hopefully, to clarity on the logo.
Good, looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to say a few things. I've been fortunate enough to be on the Board of Governors for CVB for three or four years now, and it's a pleasure to work with them, but it's not about that relationship as much as what I've seen evolve over the past several years between the CVB, Explore Charleston, and our ATAX Committee, and it's been a very positive move, I think. At one time, I would characterize it, my first year, being on the Board of Governors and being on city council, is there was a contentious relationship, and it wasn't that they were, that they didn't like each other, they were just trying to better understand each other. And to Explore Charleston's credit, Laurie Lynn, Kat, and others, Helen Hill, they came to the table. They stepped up, and they partnered with Isle of Palms on a number of ventures, much of what's been listed here, in doing some things, really, that are only specific to Isle of Palms, that's really not only looked at what we need to do to have visitors of this island, but not, it's not about quantity of visitors. We don't really want to have a lot more people come to the island. It's about the quality or the value of the visitor, and that's really grown, whether you see the average daily rates that we have with some of the luxury properties, you know, or just what people spend. I think we all get the monthly economic report that comes from Explore Charleston, and if you dive into that, you'll see that it's been a really good partnership. I think the formulas they use to calculate how they budget for Isle of Palms is good, again, and outgrows the discussions they had with the ATAX Committee, and they follow the Turk guidelines very, very closely. There's been no challenges in that regard there, and I think some of the campaigns, in particular, they mentioned the VRBO campaign, have really paid off handsomely. And you hear them right here, they're more than willing to do more. So, it's good partnership, they are a DMO, 2% accommodations tax that we pay to the state, 30% of it goes to them for advertising and marketing, because they are designated DMO. So, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, just a, just a comment on a few, what Rusty said, I agree that there has been a shift. I would like to echo my agreement in that it is around, not the quantity, but the quality of visitors that we bring onto the island, and I think that's why it's so important to rebrand the island. I think the more we can do to drive the brand of the island, to get the visitors that we want on the island, it helps everything that we work on, on this council virtually. And so, I'm very keen on making sure we get started with that rebranding. It's something I've talked to the chamber about, and they've done some work around it, but I think if we can really get a plan together around what we want, what brand do we want, and really change the logo and the advertising and everything we do around marketing this island, I think the better off we are.
Kat and Laurie, thank you all. We'll vote later this month on the approval of the budget, but thank you all for being here and for the work involved.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate the partnership.
Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Douglas, you want to do dashboard and short-term rental report, please?
Yeah, so your packet is the, first, the short-term rental report, and I would just note that this is the end of the license year, so you see there that the ultimate number of short-term rentals for the year was 1784. That could change a number or two as we find, we do occasionally find folks that should have had a license after the fact, and we go back and get them to get those licenses, but we suspect that that is the final number for this license year. So, next, next month, you'll start to see, we'll start building that number back up, and you'll remember, it kind of builds a bit over time as the applications come in. The staff is very busy with processing those applications in the middle of doing that, doing that now.
Amy, do you have this on getting there? Go ahead, Douglas.
Going to the City of Isle of Palms dashboard, we want to point out here, two good points of news and two bad points of news. The good news with the personnel vacancies is the police department vacancies are gone now, so they are fully staffed, I think. I think they were fully staffed for a few weeks in 2023, but it's been a long time, so happy to have that happen.
I think we're in better shape than a lot of police departments around the state, for sure.
The unhappy news is in the city hall staff, and specifically, the building department staff, there are two additional vacancies from what's on your dashboard. So, we do still have the financial analyst position and the deputy administrator position. We have also learned this week that Matt Sims, our zoning administrator, has accepted a job with the town of Mount Pleasant, and then we have had a clerk also resign, so we have two additional vacancies there.
Douglas, what about the fire? Any, any...
Any update on those?
Update on the three there that they have?
I was saying that was actually two.
Yeah, I was wondering if you just...
Is it, but is the position, are there three positions, or are there three positions? And, yeah, they do have, they do have interviews this week for those positions. Anything to add that you...
Where do we stand with the deputy administrator?
We have not, so, we have not advertised that yet, haven't started interviewing for it, but we will shortly. Any other questions? I think...
I have a question. The short-term rentals at 430, how does that compare to the year previous, 430, 24?
The 17, 1784, and I think last year, where is, we do have, it was down slightly from last year, but I think we can, oh, it's in the dashboard. I think we can account for that because we were more actively pulling people off the list when a property sold. So, it is, it was 1868, we, I think that number also includes some people, we suspect, got licenses to try to hold a space in case there was a cap, so we think that one was maybe artificially high a little bit, and I think we think that the 1784 is a more true number, because we have removed people that fell out.
It's almost 100 less, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And Douglas, since we're finishing, have finished the previous permit year, I'd love to see the report by revenue that we've done before, under 25,000, 25 to 50, whatever the breakpoints are. And I know that usually a couple of months after the, into the permit year, but I just want to make sure it's on the list.
I'd like to point out too, with those numbers, that the reverse of that, the percent of primary residents with no short-term rentals has been holding about steady, about steady for the last several years, about a third. So that's the number that I'm glad to see.
We've got departmental reports in the packet, and department heads are here. Questions or comments, clarity needed? Sorry, Douglas, I didn't, if you were.
No, I'm done. So if, if no questions on the departmental reports, Deborah is ready to do the financial statements.
Deborah?
Good afternoon. As of April, the general fund has collected 8% of the projected revenue for FY '25 with two months remaining for this fiscal year. Business licenses and business permit revenue are performing exceptionally well, as you can see in the general fund section of page one. Building permit revenue is 76% above the current year's budget and 92% higher than the prior year. As Douglas has mentioned, they are actively, the building department's, this has been an active season, and the building department is diligently working on getting all the license issued that were applied for. Our parking revenue, which has three months remaining for collection, is trending lower than prior year despite the city's share of sales being adjusted from 76 to 66. They're, they were being, they were being lower before that even changed. We're, here's something about parking later on in this meeting, but.
Deborah, as you say, there's three months left on that because it's, it's in a rear.
Right, because they don't write the sign until they turn the fucking off. Yes, sir. On the expenditure side, the general fund spending is currently.
Before you get off of parking?
Yes.
Does that include the fines, the revenue from fines, ticketing?
Sentations is, are in other revenue.
Okay.
As far as the expenditure, the general fund is currently 79% of the annual budget compared to our target of 83% for April. However, we do anticipate some of these lines exceeding the budget due to increased costs on our fleet repairs and maintenance, the commercial dumpster services that we talked about earlier this year, and some of our legal fees have increased. But all of the other funds are kind of tracking in line with budget as far as revenues and expenditures. Page two of the cover sheet, just to note that we do have $51 million in our cash between cash and, and investments. The interest rate is, is continuing to decrease month over month. And we did receive a million dollars in April for the beach renourishment grant from the SCPRT that was applied for the early part of this year, late part of last year. I can't remember when that was applied.
So the cash balance this time last year, is, is increased from last year to this year, it's about 7 million?
Yes, sir, from 44 million to 51.
Deborah, I keep asking that question, but I don't, but that's the cash balance, but our fund balance is at 48. So there's about a $4 million difference, right?
From?
From where our cash balance is and what our fund, current fund balance is?
Our current, that's right, yes, that is right.
Is there anything in there noteworthy that we need to reconcile that 4 million dollars?
Um, no, they're just expenditures that hasn't, that's just the two months of remaining revenues and, and expenses that, that hasn't happened yet. That's just the difference between.
Okay. But our fund balance is about 48 million currently?
Yes, that's right. 47.7. As far as the fund balance projection sheet, the third sheet, again, these are really estimates of where we are as of April 30th. These are monies that, of course, we've already spent for the year, and projections for some big ticketed items for future years. And some of those large items are, of course, a large drainage project, which is about 4.1 million, and then the, in FY '26, and then in FY '27, about 16 million dollars for beach renourishment on the south and north end of the island. As far as our tourism schedules, our municipal accommodation taxes, we received $56,000 this month, and we are tracking at 9% over prior year this time. For our state accommodations tax, those funds normally come in in April. I reached out to them and asked them about them. They, at the end of April, the check actually came May 6th, and it was $399,000 total. So we, they, this sheet will be updated for, for May, since the funds were delayed in getting here. But we are currently 8% higher than we were last year this time. For our county, Charleston County passed through, we still haven't received those funds yet for the third quarter, but we are tracking 3% higher than we were last year. Hospitality taxes, they've been lagging a little bit as well. We are 1% higher than we were last year. We're near $131,000 for last month's revenue. For the beach preservation, we're 56,000, which is 9%. Oh, and, I'm sorry, local options tax, that came in at 78,000, and we're tracking 1% higher than we were last year this time. The project worksheets are included. If you have any questions, just let me know. And as far as the budget, we have not changed anything from the first reading up until now. And so, FY '26, so we don't have any adjustments from what we've seen already.
So, yeah, draft fours, where we left off last month?
That's right. And that's all I have.
Questions for Deborah?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Douglas, you want to do procurement and then just roll into the project update?
Yes. First thing on the procurement list is a tie valve, valve purchase from WaPro for 60, roughly $68,000. That is for the Second Avenue Drainage Basin that, that exits the island, right at the, right at the Exchange Club parking lot. So that's a, that's a, an expensive valve because it's a custom-made kind of external valve. But WaPro is the brand that we've had success with and, and are using throughout the island. And there's also an $11,800 component of that, that would cover the installation by Trulock. Any questions about that one?
And Douglas, this is just our continuation of trying to block the tidal inundation across the island.
Yeah, this is specifically a project that is, was identified in our Drainage Master Plan project that was done by Davis and Floyd. And this is, we were kind of attacking the worst basins, which, and this one's, this one's really one of the worst. So we're, we're.
Is it just the valve? Or is there more work being done around it?
No, it is, correct, it is just about. Yeah, that is, that is a, I think there's a schematic in your plan, but it's a stainless steel shield around it.
But I guess what I'm at is, is there other work that, I know that while we're paying for is the valve, but are we doing more work?
Yes, yes. They have, they have actually been vacuuming that system now for, for, here in the last six weeks. They've been vacuuming it out to clear it out. There are components of that system that are running slightly uphill, but it is continuing to, continuing to run. We don't think that the benefit of replacing those parts would be seen. So, and it's very expensive to reset those pipes. So there, there is other work, and we think that with this work, it will be largely improved.
So the valve will be kind of the last piece?
Yes, correct. Next, next item on the agenda is a, is a Office 365 migration project for 34,000 of one-time fee. This would be, and, and there is a, there's a recurring monthly aspect of this at $2,564. There is a part that this is replacing that's slightly more expensive, which will go away. So it's a little bit of a savings, not much, but a few hundred dollar savings in the recurring fee. But there's a one-time, $34,000 one-time fee. And this was budgeted in, in the FY '25 budget at 30,000. So it's a, it's a bit out of, out of budget.
Is there any news on the backup?
Yeah, so we are working, the, the point was made at the public facilities meeting to ensure that we have a backup of, of all of the emails that were sent over our old server and through our old service. And VC3 is walking us through how to ensure that we do that before we cut service with our old provider. So we're, we're actively working through that. Scott and Clark are now, Scott's kind of the, the point person with that committee who, this is in his wheelhouse, so he's aware of it. He's now kind of communicating through me with Clark, the VC3 person, and getting that so where we feel very confident we won't miss any of the old emails. Fearful that we get a FOIA after the fact and we're trying to find an email from two years ago and we can't do it. So we're closing that loop.
Okay, that was the issue from committee?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's no other questions, I'll run through the capital projects update list quickly. We've had a lot of activity, a lot of activity on the Waterway Boulevard Multi-Use Path Elevation Project. You'll recall that that golf course is currently underway, the, the construction there is underway. We received word, kind of late in the process, that Wild Dunes, the owner of the golf course, needed a whole harmless agreement executed by every adjacent owner before they would authorize to do the work on the golf course. So we have been in contact with, and, and right now, it's about 22 owners in total. And we've, we held, we held a community meeting with those 22 invited last Friday. It's been done in a pretty, you know, we, time has definitely been of the essence, and we've tried to get this going kind of as quickly as we could to get the word out, because we would need those releases back to have them in, in time to be able to coordinate with this construction project of the golf course. So we're trying to hurry that along and get it done while the contractor is still there. I would say we've had a, we've had a decent response. I think of the 22, I think we've now received back seven or eight. I think we expect back an additional seven or eight pretty quickly. Then we have, we have a little bit of a, we have a couple of people who have additional questions and concerns about the project itself. And then we have a decent number of people who we have really been unable to make contact with. We, we don't have anything other than a mailing address. They've been mailed what we have, and we just can't kind of seem to get in touch with, with a handful, I think it's three or four people. So we're trying to coordinate that effort as best we can. And, and in the event that we can't get 100% cooperation with those adjacent owners, we're trying to kind of work through what our contingency plan would be, what would plan be, you know, what would, what are our alternatives to kind of salvage a meaningful project if we can't get those 100% participation?
Have you tried registered mail and the old, the old fashioned way to get in touch?
Yes, that was the, that was the first. But there also seems to have been an issue. They, they did only go out now a week ago Friday, but we are, we are just hearing of people receiving the mail that was sent now 10 days ago. So.
Happy to go such a long way.
But we, you know, we're, we're, and obviously people are just much, much more responsive via email and phone once we can get that point of contact. So the, we're doing as best we can to identify the.
And are there, there must, there are ways to do a name search to sort of get that information. You can.
It's people that are, I think it's a lot of LLCs.
LLCs, yeah.
They don't have a lawyer?
And we have tried knocking on some doors.
So we, we have a handful of owners.
Yeah, a couple of disciples.
Yeah, yeah, who are very, you know, they're very supportive of the project. They see it as a big benefit to them, and they're literally going kind of door to door and, and doing a pretty thorough search to find these, to find these owners.
What's the window of time?
We can't, yeah, it's, it's shrinking for sure.
What's, what's the drop dead? Like, hey, we don't get these by this date, then we most likely aren't going to be able to do this.
We think that we would have to be completed with our work before the end of July. So to, to get everybody in order, you know, get it all recorded, get a contract in place, and get the work actually completed, we're getting on a very tight, tight timeframe. And they've, they've told us, you know, that there is a point where they have to seed all of, all of the areas under construction, and that's, that's kind of what they're saying is.
On the golf course?
Yes, on the golf course. That's, that's kind of the point in overturn. So.
What is their timeline for that seeding?
We think it's about the end of July.
Okay.
Douglas, if you have an updated list of the ones that you have not been able to make contact with, I mean, maybe you could send that to us again, and we may be able to help. I mean, you never know.
Yeah, be happy to.
I think I provided you with one email address that.
They were, they were at the meetings.
Yeah, okay. So it always helps if you, if you don't know, maybe somebody else you know does know them. So be happy to do that.
I'll resend that with kind of a, you know, there's a status column in that list that I can share with everybody. The rest of these projects are, I mean, that's really the, the only kind of other notable one that has a significant amount of active work, is the County Park Emergency Vehicle Access. That is, that is 99% complete. There's a, there are a handful of kind of, a little bit more than a punch list, but we have electrical service to run and some surfacing to, to finish up, and then lock, locking mechanism on the gate. So that's very close to being done, but can't quite get that one over the finish line just yet. They did, they threw us a crowbar and brought a, they brought an ambulance to test out the turning radiuses. That was different than the ambulance that they provided the turn radius data to the designers for. So the ambulance actually went over the turn radius that, that the new path was laid for. But the County Park has been a great partner in that, and they've, they've come up with a cost-effective alternative to make it work. So it's happening, it's just having.
Better to know that now than later.
Yes, yeah, that's true. I was proud that the fire department called them out and had them tested. So it was good of them to do that. The, the other, really no updates other than that these are projects that are ongoing. The, the Public Dock Green Space, the Public Facilities Committee is still working through the layout of the parking plan on that. And I think that's going to be working through committee next month, and hopefully will be coming forward from that committee. And the others are just ongoing and happy to provide an update if we have one, if you have any questions.
Douglas, you've been good about weekly providing the beach updates online. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that's, that's obviously the, the other big part of what we're doing. Yeah, that's, that's obviously the, the other big part of what we're doing, the Army Corps project is progressing very slowly, they're, they're at Third Avenue, but we knew that they would be, they've, they've, we expected that. Our supplemental contractor has finished their work this past week, they were taking the, the sand from what was pumped up by the Army Corps, and they've moved it and shaped it into a protective barrier from Ninth Avenue around a breach inlet. The, on the north end, that shoal management project is, should be complete, and within the next few days, they started at Beachwood East, they placed about thirty thousand cubic yards, they then went to the Ocean Club seaside area, placed about thirty-five thousand cubic yards, and now they're going to be going back to Beachwood East. I think it's, I think it's in the next day or two, to finish that up, but that project should be, should be wrapping up, it did, you know, we, we've been kind of nervous watching the higher tides come up, over the weekend, we did have some, not super high tides, but we did have some high tides that the sand performed well in, and, you know, we're just keeping fingers crossed that what's, what we've done there buys enough time to allow that shoal to naturally come on shore and provide natural protection, but, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a, a guessing game as to how quickly that shoal is going to come on shore, so, that is also work that's progressing well.
Douglas, I just wanted to pass along from Claire Richardson at One Twenty-Eight Ocean, that you went down to see her personally and helped her in preparation for her ninetieth birthday party at the end of April, which was a big success, and she was just very grateful for the attention and making sure she could get some steps down to the beach for her birthday, I guess.
Yeah, well, thank you, we had a handful of kind of specialized requests, that we were happy to, happy to take those and accommodate people who made the request, so, happy for that.
I'd just like to, I don't know whether you're probably aware of it, but the Wild Dunes Community Association newsletter that goes out has had some really good information about what's going up there, and the response has been very positive from the community.
And I knew they had a drone, they had kind of a professionally-done drone project, which was neat to see.
Yeah, that's Bobby Carrier that does that.
Yeah, that was really neat to see.
Good work.
So, at least now the public knows we're out there doing something.
Yeah, indeed.
A lot of people at Claire's birthday party were commenting on how good the beach looked.
Yeah, good.
Douglas, I'll just let you keep rocking if you want.
Yeah, ready to go down to the.
Livability.
Livability, there is in your packet a recommendation from the public safety committee, and this is to, this comes in the response, as a response of a, an issue raised by an owner, that in our current ordinance, the, the window for revoking a short-term rental license is a calendar year, so the example was given, and it's five in a calendar year currently, the example was given that you could get four in January and four in December, and not trigger a revocation, so you've had eight in two months, and it wouldn't trigger, so, the recommendation is to change that to a, from a calendar year to a rolling three-hundred-and-sixty-five day period, where if you get five founded complaints in that window, it would trigger a revocation hearing.
John, this matches language over good with red eye.
Yes, yeah, this is, this is something that we came up actually last year in the public safety, towards the end of last year, and then it came up again with this most recent, when we, the hearing that we had, and it just, all along, it kind of didn't make sense, the calendar year, it's really intent, I think, was on a rolling twelve-month period, so, this language reflects that, and, I guess the other thing we changed, I didn't do.
It's in there, yeah.
Yeah, the, we, every two golf cart, or, I mean, golf, trash can or recycle can violations equals one founded complaint, so.
We were, we were doing that kind of administratively, but, but felt like to be buttoned up and cleaned up, that, that should be in the code, if that's how we're going to handle that, in the five strikes, two roll up.
John, thank you all for doing that, because that was, that was hanging from last year, I guess, yeah.
And if you have more than one, like.
It's one incident, yeah, if you have three cans out, that would still be one, one incident.
Asking for a friend.
Does a house down there that's got, I don't know, like fifteen recycling, you know, that'd be a big day.
Each, each incident is a.
That's a whole other story, I have three.
Next. Next consideration in your packet is consider, this, and this came specifically from the beach preservation ad hoc committee, and this deals with pools in the, what's technically the P-two preservation overlay district, currently, those pools are allowed to be constructed seaward of the maximum building line, after study and consideration, seeing what's been going on, that committee recommended that council amend the ordinance to require that pools, new pools, I should say, are built landward of the maximum building line. That was in there, that was in the code as a carryover from the beach companies handling of the restrictive covenants, and they were allowing it, so the city's code allowed it as well, but in our other zoning district overlay zones, they do not allow pools to be seaward of that, so this is making that overlay district consistent with the other two on the island.
And it would also fall into the same requirements as when, if something else gets destroyed.
Yeah, kind of non-conforming statutes.
Yeah, so, so that, we don't have to reinvent the wheel and all of that, it just goes into the non-compliant.
Correct, yes, some existing pools would be, would become legal non-conforming or grandfathered in, and we have statutes that say that they can stay in place, and, and actually, if they're, if they're destroyed by an unintentional act, a will, you know, a storm or something, they can be replaced in their exact footprint, but if you willingly tear it away, or if you don't have it yet, you, you could not put it back in that position.
So if a pool just became beyond its useful life for, you know, years, and they wanted to resurface it or redo it?
You can do that, you can maintain it, you can actually, you can actually.
Okay.
Okay, but if the, if the Beacher Ocean takes the pool, can you replace it?
You can, yeah, yeah.
It's really focused on new, really new construction.
New pools, and really where, where that, in other parts of development where that's meaningful, is where somebody clears a lot, it's an outdated house, they, or a pool, and they willingly just tear it all down, the new development of that lot would have to be compliant, so if you don't have a pool now, or you redeveloped, it, it, over time, gets these non-compliant situations into compliance.
So Douglas, this, this red line is the only, that's the only change in the code?
That's correct, it's very easy, I, I could even do that.
I was going to say.
Scratch it out.
So this will require two readings?
That's correct, and it will go to the planning commission, requires two readings and a public hearing, so that would, you'd have a reading May, and then a public hearing and second reading in June.
Okay, thank you. And Katie, that matches y'all's conversation.
Yeah, exactly.
Last thing, well, last couple of things.
We did have some discussion of whether there could possibly be, like if one was in, but I guess the two, the multiple hearings would probably take care of that, like if someone had a permit right now.
Yes, yeah, there's kind of a, there is a process that's.
Good point.
A standing process of what happens when a, an ordinance comes to light and starts being worked upon by somebody, and somebody's actively sought a permit, they would have, they would be deemed as being ahead of the, the ordinance being enacted and be allowed to do that.
Okay.
So if we have one pending, it would be allowed to continue.
Pending before second reading?
No, no, if someone, if someone has a permit, a permit already.
Right, but by when?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah, so really second reading, okay, got it.
So, the next, the next items we have, the staff with PCI here, and they worked through with the public safety committee, two issues that they were wrestling with, and this was brought, brought up as a result of some changes that were made to the charges for beach parking. The first one is the after-hours, well, really, I think on your agenda, the first one is seasonal parking passes, when, when we modified our ordinance, we took away really the ability for people to get seasonal passes, except for employees at the, at the, at the front beach area, so employees were able to get them, but nobody else was able to get them, and PCI is here, and they can talk through that, but the committee's recommendation was to allow those seasonal passes, but increase the rate, that they, they were, you know, very cheap, and cap the number of, of those that are issued, so. I think the final number was three hundred and fifty?
Yep, we, just as, as a history, the last, I mean, previously, there was, we offered seasonal passes, I think there was a much lower rate, sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars.
And they're limited to five hundred passes between that and employee passes for the, for the, for the employees of Front Beach, five hundred total is limited. We talked about limiting it at five hundred total again, but the, the concern came up that once you reached that and employee wanted a pass, you know, then they couldn't, then you couldn't get a pass for employees, so, there's already currently around a hundred and forty employee passes issued, so we just said we'd cap it at the seasonal passes at three fifty, that will probably end up going over to five hundred between the two, but, and then just keep track of it, so that next year we'll have better numbers on how many each type of pass were, were issued, and we can make a better decision with data next year.
And what, the recommendation was two forty?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five?
Two hundred and twenty-five.
I had, in committee, I'd recommended two hundred, but I went along with the majority, we, we said two twenty-five, but I still think two hundred's a good number.
Do we have a waiting list, how do we handle that on an annual basis? Like, if you've already got a pass, do you get priority, or is it, or is it just?
I think it would be first come, first served.
There is no passes issued yet, so, and once we approve this, then it'd be a first come, first served to get.
On an annual basis?
Yes, yeah, after renewing.
Right.
How much does it cost to park for a day?
Twenty-five dollars, but we have a, I guess the second, the second piece of this is, if you want to talk, is after four o'clock, instead of paying the daily rate, our recommendation is that you go to an hourly rate, which the hourly rate is three dollars an hour, so from four to eight, you just do it on an hourly rate, allow people to go to dinner, do whatever they want, if they show up at five o'clock or six o'clock and go to dinner, instead of, they can park in a lot without having to pay twenty-five dollars and just pay that hourly rate.
That's the, that's what we're solving, John.
Y'all's conversations, got you.
Yeah, those are the two issues, and, and you have in your packet, and, and PCI is here, and they can answer questions, but the, the financial impact of that, I think is on page one thirty-six on your packet, and I think it, I think it boils down to be about a two hundred and forty thousand dollar difference, reduction in revenue to do that, but I think the, I think the committee felt like the benefit to those Front Beach owners and the likelihood of increasing the, the, the traffic down there was worth the loss in revenue.
So are people actually paying twenty-five dollars just to go, like in the evenings, to go?
So the, and Quinto and Melissa are here, I think the data is from last.
Going to Sullivan's Island.
Is all from last year, and I don't know if you, if you have much data on how many people are paying the full day rate after four or five o'clock, and Quinto, if you don't mind, if you could talk into the mics, so they can pick you up on the stream.
Good evening, everyone, one of the data points, and I don't know if it was on this revised deck that I gave you, Doug, but I had it on mine, because I actually did two revisions on it, and based on the, in the committee meeting, we were looking at average duration of stay, and so, even the average duration of stay per month, it changes a little bit, it averages about one an hour and thirty-four to hour and fifty minutes throughout most of the season, with the exception of, in the month of July, we saw where most folks after four were staying at average of three hours and forty-seven minutes, so there was a little change there, but yes, for this exercise, we focus on what was happening after four PM. Not sure if there were any other specific questions went in there, but I know going back to our committee meeting, that was one of the other data points that they were looking at, is what was that average stay, and again, one of the things that the data doesn't capture is if someone comes at seven thirty or seven o'clock, they could be staying three, four hours out here, but the system cuts off at eight, so they're only paying for that duration, so that's something that the data doesn't necessarily capture, but again, from what we see, again, five and six o'clock is where you had your most activity with folks paying after-hours.
So the system, you said cuts off at eight o'clock, meaning it's just, the parking's free after eight o'clock?
Correct.
You can't pay, you couldn't, okay, correct.
And John, did committee, y'all talked four o'clock, five o'clock, six o'clock, what's the best path, or just based on these, this volumes, John?
We didn't, we just, I think historically, wasn't it, there was some four, it just felt like four o'clock was the right time.
Those are scary, yeah, and that.
Although it's open, I mean, five, yeah.
That was how PCI calculated the financial impact, was assuming after four.
Correct, using, yeah, last year's rate, obviously, after four was two dollars per an hour, so we just kind of backed in with the formula using last year's data to get there, yeah.
So John, to your point, yeah, this is, this is going back to what we had before, just the new rates.
Exactly, and the, and that, that financial impact is based on who came into the lots last year at, from four to eight, and just applying the three dollar an hour.
Because we were experiencing that revenue to begin with.
Right.
I think it's just important to point out for, for everybody, for the public, that if we implement this, which it appears that everybody's in agreement we do that, it will be a reduction in the amount of money we're charging for parking, because there was an article in the paper attacking us, and there was also an article on the, on the television or on the news show, saying that we're raising rates, and so this is clearly, we're not doing that.
They had incorrect data?
Can you believe that?
And, John, I guess, and I didn't, obviously, what's the committee meeting, the two twenty-five, I'm sure y'all were all with the place, I mean, sixties.
Yeah, I think that the, the, if you remember, we have a weekly pass at a hundred, and so.
And that'll stay?
That will stay, so you can still buy a weekly pass for a hundred, and we felt, okay, what's a, a reasonable jump, and we started at the low end of two hundred and went to two fifty, and kind of did so, we just said, you know, it was kind of, the recommendation was kind of go in the middle at two twenty-five, which seems like a reasonable number to me, based on a hundred dollars a week, you know, you can get a hundred dollar pass for a week, or you can get two twenty-five, you don't want to make it too close to a hundred dollar pass. I'm still in favor of two hundred, but I voted with the committee.
And this, well, this is not a two reading?
No, no, this would be on your agenda.
Taken at our, yeah.
Yeah.
Or next meeting.
By resolution, at council.
Yeah.
As an aside, y'all are doing a great job, I'm on Palm Boulevard a lot, and y'all are doing a great job, and it's a hard job, and you don't get the right condition.
They hear that too much. Melissa's out there painting the white line for it every weekend.
And there it is up there, that, I think Doug did feature the revised, but just so if you wanted to see the breakdown per month on the average duration of stay, that is on that slide tube, I don't, that was a revised deck.
Yeah, you will, in your packet doesn't have that, those two right columns.
That's a big jump in July from the other months, I don't know what's driving that.
Fourth of July fireworks is part of it.
Because that would be the extended period.
They'll be here all day and night.
Yeah, Douglas, do you mind just popping that to everybody?
Yes, yeah.
I would think that we need to revisit this next year, to just do an evaluation, since we've raised the rates this year, and made these other changes, just to see, and also, the agreement is, has been modified, to see where we stand with our parking revenue.
And John, I think that's, I heard you say that, was to just drive for a year, monitor it, see what happens, see how many we sell, and.
One other creative strategy to consider, I know we talked a little bit about this in our weekly meeting, Doug and with Chief, but you guys do have two municipal lots out there, A and B, there could be a strategy to potentially look at one lot. there, A and B. There could be a strategy to potentially look at one lot serving as one rate structure, and the other serving as another. Again, depending on exactly what you're trying to achieve with the, you know, I'm, I'm not clear what kind of conversations have come up outside of, yes, the hourly rate, but there was a different, couple of different ways you can kind of slice that, depending on where, what you're really trying to drive with the communication.
Yeah, which, that's why I think next year we'll have better data, we'll make a decision if something like that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But do you have the technology capabilities to charge different rates at different lots?
Yeah. Yeah, we think the biggest hurdle there would be more of just the education piece, in terms of, I think even right now, with Lot A, what we see is a lot of folks, whether it's with the business permit passes or early arrivals, they sit on that lot, it doesn't have as much turnover as B. So that's where that education piece and signage would come in, and potentially housing our permit holders on the B. Different, a couple of different strategies you can look at, depending on, again, what the goals would be.
One more thing, too, is remember, we're getting revenue from parking citations, and that doesn't show up in these numbers.
PCI, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate the help, as always. Douglas, you're on a roll, man.
The, the next item on your agenda is, and, and this is a little bit overwhelming, because there's a lot, there's a lot to it, but the, the council is, has been given and is being given a lot of recommendations. We have, the planning commission's been working on the comprehensive plan, which is coming forward to you with a, in a draft form next month. You have the, the community enrichment, the, the community enhancement committee has made recommendations to you. The beach preservation ad hoc committee has made recommendations to you. And the staff working with the planning commission has developed a matrix to try to give some order to those recommendations. And really, what we would be asking for council to do is ju, is to just bless the assignment of, of each recommendation. So we're hopeful that we could group recommendations by initiative, and, and that pack, that part of the puzzle's not in your packet, because there's a whole nother tab that deals with this, but to give committees a stack of recommendations that are all related, to try to work through them, kind of issue at a time, and have that feed up through the full council for consideration. So trying to make it a little bit more manageable for you all to, to look at them, review them, and, and enact the recommendations that you would like to. Also giving a budgetary amount, and a, and a, a lot of the recommendations that you all are receiving are more aspirational, you know, they don't have really an actionable component to them. So we're trying to kind of give you all the ability to, to capture the low hanging fruit. You know, there, there's some that are inexpensive and easy to do, and, and organized by, by structure. Others are, you know, very long, long plan, long lead, or, or an expensive item, that, you know, we can start planning for that, but there's not anything that we could do, kind of, in the short term. So for what we're looking for now, and, and I don't think this is anything more really than a head, a head nod, is to review the assigned committee. And, and if you see any that you think shouldn't go into that committee, just let us know. But if, if everything appears to be in order to you, and you all are agreeable, the next step would be to, to hand these assignments out to the assigned committees.
And Douglas, the only thing council hasn't seen at this point is the new comprehensive plan.
That's correct.
In that, I think they're planning to come.
In June.
In June, right. They, Planning Commission, planning to come.
That's correct.
So the comprehensive plan that's in this list is the old comprehensive?
No, that is, this is the new comprehensive.
Because I think, yeah, they're about done, they've.
Yeah, they've been.
So part of the assignment, you may have said this, and I missed it, but I'm gonna ask, in case, in case she said it. There's multiple initiatives, and I thought the planning commission was going to go through and say, okay, here's the same item from all these, and combine them into one.
Well, that, that hasn't, we're going to give you, and, and, and part of this process, and we learned this, is that, you know, each of those, each of these recommendations was labored over. The, the authors of the recommendations had very specific wording, you know, kind of a tone, language that was in there. And we, we think it's important that the committee and the council get the actual language of each, but there has been a packaging by initiative. So when you look at it, to get to your point, there being overlap, so, so there, there could be very nuanced differences based on the wording of those, and we want the committee to have the original wording, just because it was, you know, so kind of labored over. But, yes, we're going to put them together by, by initiative, so you'll be seeing all of the same initiatives at one time, so you can sort through those.
So the committee would then sort through and say, oh, these three are the same, so we're just going to do.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. I'm confused, because what I'm looking at here is very difficult to sift through. Is there any way to sort this table differently?
Yes, and, and I hope I've given it all to you in Excel, and each column is sortable, so you can, if you're interested in the, the inexpensive priorities for budgetary, you can just sort by that column, and the, the cheap ones bubble to the top. If you're interested in the Coyote Initiative, you can sort by initiative, and it'll give you the stack that are dealing with.
You can create your own.
So you can sort it however you see fit.
I think also, once it.
Did we get that in our package?
Not in the, not in the packet, I think you should, if you haven't already received it in Excel.
You said separately.
Separately in an Excel.
Do you have this?
Week and a half ago.
Do you have this, Jim?
Well, Douglas, it's that spreadsheet that Douglas.
Right, but all of that's in here, too.
That was sent a week or so ago.
Yeah, it was sent a little while ago.
But once we start to look at it in committees, I think it will look less.
Yeah, it would be easier if it was sorted by committee, and then by, by short, medium, and long term sort of thing. So then you, it really becomes manageable for each person.
Yeah, that's exactly, the intent of the tool is to allow, the, the data set is to allow you to do that.
So are we thinking that we wait to see the comprehensive plan before we start working on this as a committee? But because the comprehensive plan is already captured.
Yeah, I, I think, I think there's a lot to, to kind of, so I, I think we, I think the committees start now.
Right away.
And, and, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot to get through, yeah. There's a lot to get through. I think the comprehensive plan review and kind of adoption will, will get done in relatively short order. And this, you know, there's just a lot of work to be done here, so it'll, I think the committees could be working on it for a while. And there's, you know, there's nothing, there's not going to be anything that's, that I think council hasn't kind of heard about, thought about, seen in some fashion before. It's, it's definitely unique takes on each issue, but they're, they're issues that you will have been wrestling with your entire time here.
And as you look at, I'm looking through this, and it's like the magnifying glass approach with some of this, but for me, but.
Much easier on the screen, I will say.
Yeah. Aspirational type goals or comments, you know, those are the kind of things that a number of those could probably fall, fall under lobbying effort.
Right.
As you go through there, and look at some of those, some of those items. It doesn't mean the committee would walk away from it, but they may be assigned in a different way.
Yeah. Yeah, it gives you the ability, literally, to just, if an issue bubbles up, type it into the data set and see kind of all the recommendations that have been made on that topic pretty quickly.
Well, it's easy to see the committees were busy.
Yeah, I think you've done a great job. Douglas, thank you for, and the, and the planning commission. So they'll be here next month to walk us through the updated comp plan. But committees can start in June, really, ciphering off.
Yep. Last item on the agenda is to discuss a request from the LENS organization, and this is for signage at the island entrances. This also went through committee, and, and I think the consideration here was just being prepared, if the council was of a mind, to, to allow organizations that, that are on the island to put a sign up. I think there would be the expectation that you'd have multiple requests for that. And the recommendation, paraphrasing saying, is that they recommended not approving the request, but if, if a majority of council was of a mind to approve the request, I think the committee would like the opportunity to kind of give some structure to what should be considered in situations where council wanted to approve us on.
Katie, did he capture?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, right now, it's just too, you know, it's, it's too hard to pick one charitable organization over another. And, you know, the, the city putting it on their sign is, is endorsing, standing behind, whatever, and that's wonderful, but then what about all of the ones that are being left off? That was my concern. And then, so then, and then the conversation of, okay, so maybe we do want to have some methodology for doing that, whatever that might be. If, if we did that, we needed to have some sort of methodology for it.
Yeah, and if, if, if the council was generally of a mindset to go down, you know, the, the path of allowing these signs, there really are two different scenarios. One would be allowing them on city property. The city obviously owns the property at the base of the connector. That one is kind of one path forward, because you're allowing it on city property. The other path would be the city authorizing it as an informational sign in the public right of way, but there would still be the additional hurdle of getting an encroachment permit from the DOT, because it is their right of way. And we don't know with any certainty that they will approve that encroachment permit. So there is a second hurdle, we don't know exactly how that would play out, if you were of a mindset to authorize it in the right of way. Right now, our, our code prohibits signs in the right of way, other than informational signs approved by the city. So this would, this would be a way to, that's kind of a path to approve it, but just knowing that the DOT would also have to approve it.
To Katie's point, I mean, this feels Pandora box-ish to me. I mean, I love LENS, I love VFW, I mean, they all do great work. And I get LENS is the only one focused on city employees, but I just, there are so many signs, when you come over our connector.
It would look pretty ugly over there if you start putting up signs all over.
Part of me wonders, what's, I mean, are you going to stop and read the sign and say, gosh, I probably ought to write a check to these people? I mean, I just don't know what the.
The benefit is.
The benefit.
That was one of my questions, too. It doesn't, it seems like they do a wonderful job of getting their message out. And, you know, yeah, I don't really see much of a benefit of having that sign on our sign.
Jimmy?
Those are all good points. The point I would strike is that, or tell everyone is that I'm just worried about more distractions for drivers, you know. They go, well, come over and look for whatever club it is, sign, and they're thinking, back to their club in Charlotte or whatever. And so they're driving, and coming off that connector is very busy anyway. There's, you know, you've got three choices, where are you going to go, left, right, or straight? And, and we just don't need anything to distract the drivers of the vehicles, in my mind.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna go the other way. This is an organization that's been around for several years now. When you look at what they do in the community, and what they deliver to the community, it's, it's, it's impressive. For me, this is as much a goodwill gesture to honor an organization that's giving back to the community. I went to the LENS block party last night, as a couple of others here on council did. And to see the smiling faces of these kids and everything that's going on around there was just great to see. Or if you go to the Wild Child Triathlon in Wild Dunes, or if you go to the events they have off the dock at the Exchange Club. I mean, I get it that we have other charitable organizations on, on this island, we certainly do, Exchange Club, Chamber of Commerce, the churches, they're all important, but we are a charitable, giving community also. And for me, to honor a simple request like this for two signs that aren't that large, that in my mind is not going to make a bit of difference in what a driver looks at. In fact, I don't even know if they're going to look at the sign. For me, it's more of a support of an organization that's giving back to our community, our public safety department. So it's a, it's a little personal thing for me regarding what they do for public safety and have done, and what they plan on doing in the future. So I'll just leave it at that. I know we're going to have a lot more discussion about it, but that's, that's my spiel on it.
I mean, I would agree with Rusty, just because, you know, it seems just like a small gesture. And I know that a lot of people don't look at signs, because a lot of people don't read anymore. But, and I don't think, I mean, I thought we were kind of talking about putting the sign at the end of the connector. And, you know, I think a compromise with just one sign instead of two at the intersection and one at the breach. I mean, it just seems like this organization does so much to bring our community together, not only just supporting our public safety. They do so many community events that a lot of people, it's their favorite event, you know, of the year, and they do several of them. I think it's just a good organization, and I think it would just be a very small gesture, just to say, you know, Ala Poms is a giving community that cares about our public safety. And if they notice the sign, great. And if not, you know, the people that care will notice it.
Yeah. And like I say, I'm a huge supporter and help LENS get off the ground, but we're kidding ourselves if we think this is going to be the only sign that comes in as a request. I, I get it. I mean, I hear you, but we can send it back to committee, but you're going to have multiple people coming out looking for a sign. Like I say, I'm a huge supporter, totally get it, but.
May I make one last point?
Certainly.
I was thinking about this, maybe not at the entrance of the island, but designate a space where, like, foot traffic could, could see it, and something that people can see them a lot in that. One, one such place that might be considered is like in front of the public restrooms, where you dedicate a space where all the civic organizations on the island, they're, could put a sign.
And maybe have a QR code, if somebody really was interested.
I think that makes something, something like that makes more, this is a twenty-inch sign, it's a fairly big sign, you know, that, that they want. It's not a small sign. And, you know, if you allow that for them, and then you have other twenty-inch signs coming up, that could get really ugly really quick. And, and so, yeah, I think something like a, a board with, that you could put community organizations, they're all the same size, enlist them to recognize them, I think it makes more sense if you wanted to do something.
Yeah, I think we need to set a policy for this.
That's, yeah. Again, that's one of the other concerns, is that without having any sort of restrictions, you, you'd just be amazed at what people can come up with. Somebody painted the rock at the elementary school with no mask on it a couple of years ago, so, you know. Options are endless for things like that.
Ashley or Rusty, what's Charles' reaction to Jimmy's suggestion?
I, I, look, I go into this thinking you're always going to compromise at some level. You know, a good, a good negotiation starts where you want it to go ultimately, and then work your way back if you have to. I still think that two signs where they were recommended would not be a problem. But still, I don't want to compromise, just as I think probably most of the people on our council are. And I would just rather see us really look at ways that we could honor this without just throwing it out, out of hand and saying, no sign, no sign. If you, if you've got a sign, that means everybody else is going to want a sign. We've had churches on the islands for years, Exchange Club's been on the island for years, Chamber of Commerce is relatively new. Yeah, we may have other requests for signage, but so far, none of the others have requested that. You know, it's been LENS that came up and said, you know, they've stepped up and said, you know, we would just like to have something, a sign here in two different locations, that would be emblematic of what we're doing to honor and protect and give back to the island and their public safety departments, so.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think a compromise, go back with them and maybe say one sign, or make it smaller. I mean, the garden club sign is here, and I mean.
It's gone.
Is it?
See, you didn't even notice.
Exactly that. That is a decent, decent point. But, yeah, I mean, you know, the other thing that I feel like this organization does that is just different, I mean, it just, it's very unique. I mean, they do the speaker series, the kids try. I mean, they do the speaker series, the kids triathlon, the annual LENS banquet that honors and recognizes our public safety, like they did the neighborhood block party Taste of the Island last year. I mean, they were really fun and well-attended events. They do kids crabbing events, and when they do those, they invite others to participate, such as the aquarium, Charleston Waterkeeper, the beach cleanup crew. I mean, it's just providing education to our youth, our, they provide an opportunity for officers to meet with kids, they go over bike safety and boating safety, the firefighter appreciation night. I just think that they do a lot of unique, community, large-oriented events, and I think that it's very appreciated by our community and by the public safety. I just think it's a small gesture.
I think I, I agree with you that they're a worthwhile organization. I think we all agree with that. It's just a matter, let's set a policy for how we're going to deal with it if the other nonprofits on the island that are doing good work, too, decide that they, this is a good idea and we want to join in, and how are we going to handle all of them?
I mean, we have to do something that's objective and not subjective, and so it can't be based on, well, they do really good work, so they get to do it, but somebody else doesn't do as good a work, they can't, you know? We have to be objective. And I like Jimmy's idea, I mean, it is a, a tradition, at least in South Carolina, I think other places as well, the small towns, somewhere there's a board where people can put up signs. Every small town in South Carolina's got one.
Yeah.
And let's find a place and do that, whether it's at the public restrooms, or, or just in the lot on the edge of our public lot, but someplace where any of those people can put up a sign.
Those small towns, it's usually the city limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're tiny.
And don't have thirty thousand people coming up on Saturday. All right, Douglas, we got direction.
We're going to...
Need a policy, have a compromise.
Somewhere, somewhere put a sign. We could go back to the beautification of the lot.
Yeah, so, so I was, it's a pretty nuanced difference, but if it's not at the edge...
Hang on.
If the sign were not at the edge of the road, it's a different, our sign ordinance deals with it differently, you don't have the DOT kind of issue, so there is a bit of a difference in terms of our regulations.
There's more like leeway to move.
Yeah, you're still, you're still faced with the issue of, you know, people asking for permission, kind of opening Pandora's box if that were to happen. It's, so there's a little bit of a difference, not, not a tremendous difference.
But we would control that Pandora's box in that case.
We will define what is permissible.
Right. Do we want, do we want to...
What size, what...
Start with LENS asking if anything other than what they've submitted is agreeable to them? I mean, I guess I have the, I have the feeling that if it were, that they may come back and say, well, the committee would put considerable work into it, it goes through council, and then nobody wants to do that.
I think it could wait two weeks, and, and we don't have consensus on council yet, and needs more discussion and more thought. There's been a lot of good suggestions being made tonight that I'd like to think about.
And talk about at council?
And then, then we give them direction.
At council?
Yes, yes, sir. On the twenty-seventh, I think it is.
Yeah, and maybe look into what other cities and councils do to recognize...
I could definitely get feedback from LENS as to whether or not they would consider that.
Yeah, I think asking them...
And then come, put it on your agenda for council.
Right.
Legislature to report, you probably already know, but the House and Senate adjourned on May eighth. They have a budget that has yet to be hammered out, so we'll start that on May twenty-eighth. And they've got a, I can't remember what they, a conference committee, three House members, three Senate members to hash out the budgets, and hopefully that'll be forthcoming soon. There are no other items for business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Off record at six thirty-four.